Welcome to the Bridgewater Township Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. On January 9th, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger, filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater, and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Please be aware of the planning board policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 p.m. and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 p.m. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodations will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, provided the individual with the disability provides 48 hours' advance notice to the Planning Department Secretary before the public meeting. However, if the individual should require special equipment or services such as a card transcriber, seven days' advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. Would everyone please rise as you lift a flag?
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Probst, could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Here.
Councilman Kirsch.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Magora.
Here.
Mr. Wang.
Here.
Ms. Sikora.
Here.
Mr. Banga. Ms. Chartowicz.
Here.
Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins. Mark Peck, Board Attorneys present. Bill Burr, Board Engineer.
Here.
Catherine Sarmad, Board Planner.
Here.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Probst. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium any member of the public wishing to address this board in any matter not listed on the agenda. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. We do have one resolution this evening, and that is the memorializing adoption of our comprehensive master plan. At this time, I'd like to welcome any comments, questions, or perhaps change to the record. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt our township's comprehensive master plan.
I'll make that motion.
That's Ms. Sikora, and I'll take a second, please.
I can do that.
That's Mr. Chowdhury. Could I have a full roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Ms. Chartowicz.
Yes.
You were absent, so you would not be eligible. Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Moving along.
Is that true that Ms. Chartowicz is not eligible?
I believe that is correct. Mr. Peck.
If the member wasn't present during the hearing, then they can't vote on the resolution.
Are we okay with the roll call, Ms. Probst? Okay. We will move along. We do not have any applications this evening. However, we do have a presentation of the Baumbuk Quarry, which is currently operated by the Stavola Construction Materials Company. And who will be presenting this plan this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Thomas Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H. I am with Stavola Arcosa, a company that's been in existence for quite some time, operating the quarry. As you know, I've been before this board a couple of years ago, also each year before the Township Committee for our mining license renewal. As part of that process, the board has the opportunity to have us come before you and present our progress towards reclamation of the quarry, which plan was approved back in 1986. And that has been a documented reclamation plan for which we're continuing to follow today. Since we were here in 2022, before your board, we've taken the opportunity to offer tours of our quarry to, I think, several of you members who have joined us. We've had informal discussions with your staff, including attorney, the chairman, the administrator as well, and also town engineer, Bill Burr. And I think that was very helpful to exchange information as to where we are in our overall reclamation of the quarry. Where we are tonight, and the purpose for being here, is to essentially bring the board up to date with those discussions that we've had over the last several months. And I think at the conclusion of those meetings, I think the members of that committee were satisfied with our information and what our responses were to their quarries, so that we could then move on to the next step, which is the presentation we're here for you tonight. Joining me tonight, I have various representatives of Stavola Arcosa, including our president, Mike Gentoso, the general manager, Max Walensky. And first up, I'd ask Wayne Ingram of French &amp; Perillo, our consulting engineer, to step up and put the presentation before you tonight. And at the conclusion of his presentation, I'd welcome any questions to be asked by any board member to any of us here tonight. So again, appreciate being here. Hopefully, you'll find this very informative. And if you have any questions, as I said, please feel free to ask at the conclusion of Wayne's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Branch.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're going to give in connection with this presentation will be the truth, not the truth?
Thank you. Could you just state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Wayne Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M, and I'm an engineer and planner with Stavola. All right, so what we brought with us tonight are two plans, which I think we've given reduced-size copies to the board. But it's basically our mine plan and an overlaid version of the reclamation plan. So just to start with the mine license plan, you know, basically on this, we've tried to highlight the various areas, you know, as we kind of segregate out what's been done on the quarry. The highlighted yellow area is our active mining area. In dark green, we have the reclaimed areas. The lighter green on the southern end is the constructed retail redevelopment. We've highlighted the fencing that we have along the residential zone, along with the 100-foot buffer and 150-foot mining limits adjacent to those zones. And in the blue, you can see our existing stormwater basins. All right, so shifting over now to the 2025 reclamation plan, what we tried to do here was take the four areas that were highlighted as part of the 1986 plan over top of where we are at today, to kind of try to give some context to how we followed that plan and where we're at and where we're going. So starting with, and again, these designations go back to that 1986 reclamation plan. The first area, which we call the primary quarry area, is under Stage 1, Phase 1. That area was the initial area of removal for the quarry. We have our primary crusher in that area. And again, there are active operations going on there. Stage 2, the chimney rock slope area, that's an area where prior reclamation has occurred. As you can see, in the green areas on the top, that's where slopes have been stabilized over time. They've done resloping of those areas in consultation with the state and the Department of Labor. And that's where we have our constructed stormwater basins. The lighter blue is the ones that exist. The darker is what is a proposed basin. And that's, again, going to be done in consultation, you know, with the engineers. And also, I think one thing we wanted to highlight tonight is that we are working with Somerset County and a consultant, AECOM, as part of a flood mitigation project. They've kind of gotten through Phase 1 of that review, where the county has said that they believe that, you know, the quarry can be a benefit to downstream flooding with flood mitigation by creating that storage areas. So we've kind of moved on to the next step. And that's an ongoing process and evaluation, where they're doing hydrology studies to figure out how, you know, the quarry can be incorporated into those plans to reduce flooding in the areas. So again, that remains ongoing, and, you know, we're happy to support them, you know, in trying to utilize our basins that we need for our stormwater management to benefit the community as a whole. Stage 3 is our largest area of quarrying. It's the western side, the rear of the site. That's the area where we have a lot of active, ongoing mining operations. Eventually, the crusher will be relocated back there, which will allow for further reclamation of Phase 1. There's relocation of the overburdened material back there, so that, you know, we keep our reserve of that material on site to support the future reclamation activities. So that's being relocated. I think we're taking it down to the southern end of the site to await reclamation as we, you know, mine out certain areas to the limits. As you can see on the northern end, the high walls are basically nearing the 150-foot mining limit. And finally, we have what's also called the primary quarry area, Stage 4, Phase 2. That's located within the C3 zone, south of the ridge line. As you can see, that's a wooded area. You know, the northern portion of it has already been reclaimed, and, you know, there's no mining activities proposed in that area. So again, these areas, you know, the shapes that you see were part of that 1986 plan. You can see that, you know, it's kind of in line with what's occurred to this point. You know, we've already, you know, done the reclamation and redevelopments of the eastern portion. We've got our slopes stabilized, and the other areas remain active at this time. The life of the quarry is a variable. You know, the finite number ends up being what you have in terms of reserves, but how fast you go through them is a function of a lot of factors, including the economy. You know, I think the last time we were here a few years ago, we estimated 35 to 40 years of quarry life. And we're probably at the 30 to 35 years of quarry life now. But again, that's something that can shift, you know, based upon how fast we are able to sell those materials. I think that, you know, more or less, you know, describes the, you know, the way we're proceeding with the reclamation. I can certainly go through what we documented as the questions from the last meeting a few years ago, just to provide some clarity and finality to a lot of those issues raised at that time. So just for, you know, from the notes that we've taken, first question was, what are our block and lots? We kind of highlighted that in the prior plan. There's multiple block and lots that have been part of the quarry. The active mining application takes place on Block 711, Lot 6. Second question was, is the current grading sloping compliant with the state requirements for 30% or less? So our grading and sloping has been done in accordance with the New Jersey Department of Labor and their requests. You know, in areas where we're steeper than that, it's because they were trying to prevent things like ATVs, you know, from coming into the site and creating an unsafe condition. So there are areas that, you know, in their opinion, it was smarter to steepen the slopes to prevent people from, you know, utilizing them for things they weren't supposed to. So we basically followed their, you know, their guidance with respect to that. Third question was, is there a before or after of the reclamation plan? And if so, how? Has it been modified? I think that's kind of what we tried to do here with this plan and the overlay, to kind of show you how those 86 lines matched up to where we are today. Fourth was, is the current operation within the limits of the 150-foot buffer? It is our opinion that it is. Again, we've highlighted that, you know, that buffer on the plan. High walls are inside of that. You know, there's obviously no intention to, you know, go into those areas. You know, we fully intend to hold to those requirements. Is there, question five, is there a six-foot chain link fence around the perimeter consistent with the ordinance? We do have a chain link fence, as shown and documented on both plans, which goes around the portions of the property adjacent to the, all the residential zones. So that is in place. Sixth question was, do the stormwater basins overflow to the west branch of the Middle Brook? So the quarry does discharge in that direction, but our basins are what allow us to control our discharges. And that's what makes us, you know, a good opportunity for flood mitigation, because we control when the water leaves our site. You know, we can make sure we don't have releases at times that there is flooding concerns, so that we can, you know, minimize those downstream impacts. And, you know, we'll be happy to update the township as we get updates from the consultants involved on the status. Number seven, is there any documentation that demonstrates the progress of the reclamation? And again, I think that was our intention here. Again, we'll happy to answer any questions later on that may arise from that. Eight, is the reclamation plan consistent with the deadlines for completion outlined in the ordinance? Yes. So it is our intention, the ordinance requires that you complete your reclamation within two years of ceasing your quarrying activity. That is our intention, is to perform the reclamation concurrently with the quarrying, so that we can complete within the timeframes required by the ordinance. Question nine, what measures are in place to ensure onsite material is not washed away in flooding events? Again, I think that comes back to the basins. You know, those are, you know, sedimentation basins as well. So, you know, anything that comes off, it's not as if it's going off the property flowing down the road. It's managed and collected within the basins on the site. And the final question we had was, how are fill and milling stabilized to prevent erosion? Well, obviously, fill, you know, as we, you know, perform the reclamation, it's graded and compacted into the site. The quarry maintains a soil conservation permit with the county that, you know, we get periodic inspections. It's a permit that's renewed, you know, every three and a half years. And as part of that, you know, we show them all of our soil erosion measures, and they will check, you know, that those are all in place to prevent, you know, the offsite migration of any of those materials. That's what we had from our notes in terms of the questions from last time. But, you know, we were happy to answer any questions or concerns the board may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingram. At this time, I'd like to help them.
Just more of a, almost a procedural question. Just to clarify, the materials, the 2025 reclamation plan, the executive summary, the fact sheet, that supplements and amends the 1986 reclamation plan? You're not replacing the 1986?
That's correct. We're trying to add clarity to show you how we've been following that and how it fits into where we are today.
Oh, right. So to the extent there's any inconsistency between what you're presenting now and what was in the 86 plan, what you're presenting now is what would be operative?
Yes, this is the operation that we're performing.
To the record.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Board Attorney, Mr. Peck. Any other questions from our members of the planning board regarding Mr. Ingram's presentation? Mr. Chowdhury?
So on that stage 3, I think, on the west side, that where you're going to start the mining operations soon, I guess?
Mining operations have been ongoing. So these lighter lines you see, that's the benches that have basically been created to bring you from the higher grade down to the lowest area of the pit. So that's been ongoing for many years. We can't go any further north. We will progress west and south. And again, the reclamation is going to kind of take place in a clockwise fashion. You know, we're moving material to areas that are finished up, you know, start reclaiming slopes and, you know, utilizing that area and the backfill materials.
How many years it takes basically for starting any reclamation? Because it looks like that you had an 86 and now 2025. So the stage 1 is almost done now. There is no persons there, right?
There's still activities certainly going on here. Again, we have our crusher located in that area. Some materials are being mined. So, you know, it took many years for the eastern portion of the site to be, you know, completed and redeveloped. You know, this will be an area that, you know, probably gets left earlier on as they work towards the back. Once they remove the crusher and place it back there, they can finish up reclamation activities. But it's going to take place over that 30-year or so year lifespan.
So initially, you said it is about 35 to 40 years of quarry life. So since you are moving towards the west, so that also added the 35 years again, or?
No, that's the quarry itself. That's how long we will have. We're estimating active quarrying to take place on the property as a whole. I mean, the way the stages were broken up, it wasn't as if one area would be completed before you would start another. You know, for instance, Stage 4, Phase 2, there's nothing that's going to occur here. It's already reclaimed. It wasn't really, you know, sequential numbering as much as it was breaking up how things would occur. So it will still be in these areas, you know, during that time.
The last one is your stormwater basin that is sufficient enough for bringing the water from the lower level from the Somerset counties?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have low areas that we collect water. We can discharge to those, you know, to those basins. As I said, the light blue ones are the ones that are active today. This is kind of the future basin that's envisioned. But again, the sizing and everything, you know, part of that's going to be what we need for reclamation. And, you know, as you get closer to the end of reclamation, then you can start thinking about, you know, redevelopment and future things that might affect how it's used. And then also, we're going to take into account what we get out of this study that's being performed with the county. If they have, you know, other ideas and recommendations to incorporate into the sizing that would, you know, improve those flood conditions, that can affect it as well.
First of all, and lastly, thank you for at least having us. It was a nice tour. The interesting is I know little now about quarry. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have some.
Mr. Pappas?
Mr. Ingram, I appreciate you addressing the questions. I followed questions that were captured in the planning board minutes from September 13th, 2022. And when we met as professional staff and our consultants with you folks a few months ago, it was represented that these questions were going to be addressed here tonight. So I see that you did address some, but you didn't address all of them, from my perspective. So again, looking at the same set of minutes, I'm referencing a question that I asked you, Mr. Ingram. I'm just going to read the minutes, because they do capture what was said. Mr. Pappas asked, this is page 4, "Mr. Pappas asked Mr. Ingram to review the memo in order to address questions about sequence. He asked what the document labeled, quote, 'Page 54,' end quote, was, and pointed out that there was no reference to the document having been recorded. Mr. Ingram indicated that it was part of the agreement. Mr. Pappas asked how that could be verified, and then asked what reclamation plan they were following. Mr. Montag advised that this was the first time he was hearing questions about the validity of the document, assured Mr. Pappas that they would research it."
To our council, we press, you know, that I think we've discussed that in our prior meetings.
I had meetings we did before this. We sat down with representatives of your council. I thought this has been covered. But we think it's a completely, you know, legally binding document, part of an agreement that was actually needed between the township and quarry, because you, so that the quarry wouldn't accept solid waste. So that is the agreement that everybody's been relying on since then. We believe it's properly created. We believe the township had a copy, and we have no issues with the legality of the document. And if there's questions beyond that, I'm happy to take that up with your council or board secretary.
Well, I'd like to address it here as one board member, because it's still not clear to me. I understand what you've said here tonight, which is what you said before. You referenced the agreement that was primarily established to prevent this facility, this property from being used as a solid waste facility. But that doesn't necessarily reference or capture what, what, the content of the reclamation plan back from 1986. And that continues to be my question. And when I posed this question back in 2022, that was really the central point of my question. And you keep referring, the document that I was referencing, I didn't bring my copy with me, rather thick. I referenced that portion of it clearly was recorded. But then a portion of the document that you presented was not. And you were, I didn't push you at the time, because I was trying to be considerate. But since then, you've really not addressed that question, Mr. Montag. Let me finish, please. And I'm frustrated by that. When we met a few months ago, I felt encouraged by the tenor of our conversation when we met as professional staff with you folks. And tonight, I'm feeling a brush-off. I'm feeling this point as being, you're being dismissive of it.
Well, I'm certainly not. I've had several meetings with you and others. I thought we have gotten past that, that everybody is relying on this document, and the township has had a copy. And that in and of itself, in our view, presented as a legally binding document, will be reached, reconsidered. We want to show you how that document and the phases in that document aligns with the plan today. And while we're not going, we believe it's legally binding, we are not going to agree otherwise. If there were any updates that were needed to our reclamation, which is concerned that this would have, we are happy to address it. We can always talk about that 1986 plan. And it goes to Mr. Peck's question, and I think it was an appropriate question, saying, you know, you're respecting our position that that's a legal document. But anything we're doing now today on reclamation, might it update that plan? Sure. Or edit it somewhere. We have no problem with that. And if there's any concerns about the reclamation plan that exists, and you have to make amendments to it, we're happy to do that. So with all due respect, I, you know, I don't think there's any reason we have to argue about a 1986 document, whether it was recorded or not, that was, you know, 40 years ago. I don't have the records. But either way, we believe it is a perfectly legally binding document.
Every time you have been, when we've discussed this, you keep stating the same point again and again. I understand it's a document that's been recorded. I understand there was agreement. But you also said, and you've said previously, that the point, the main point, this is my takeaway, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was that it was, it captured the point that this would not be used as a solid waste facility. And I continue to ask for, and I'll ask again, what parts of the 1985 or 1986 document capture reclamation? And what parts of that document are being amended with what's being presented tonight? Perhaps if you answer that question, at least for me, and maybe I'm the only person that has this question in my mind, if you answer that question, then maybe I can move on. But I really don't think that that question has ever been answered, from my perspective. So if you can, if you can address that, that would be helpful.
And I believe it is, Mr. Pappas. And with all due respect, the whole purpose of tonight was to do an overlay to show how the phases of the plan, the 1986 plan outlines phases that we would go through. And the question became, well, how does that align with what we're seeing today on site? And that was the presentation, to do that very thing.
So if Mr. Ingram could, Mr. Ingram could say.
That one point, we believe it is, it is consistent. We weren't asked to come here to express precisely what was being amended or not. We're just saying to you, what we're doing is consistent with the 86 plan, and we outlined it up here just to show you on the mapping. And we were asked to make it more current. I believe, again, that's what Mr. Peck and I discussed. And that's what we're trying to do in good faith. If there's something else you want to see, we're happy to do it.
So what I just asked for is if you could point out, Mr. Ingram perhaps could point out, what parts of the document that he's referencing are specific changes to the 1985 or 1986 plan? That's my question. I think it's a simple question.
I don't think we have anything that we're saying is materially different in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with reclamation from the plan. We did, I think, also additionally provide a document where we went through the ordinance and described how we, you know, complied with the different, you know, aspects of the township ordinance. I mean, the, you know, where we say that, you know, things have changed, we talked about how, you know, the sloping has been amended in accordance with what the Department of Labor asked us to do in terms of, you know, protect, being protected. You know, that's probably an amendment, you know, from that wording. But in terms of where we're working and you know, from that wording. But in terms of where we're working and what we're doing and what the goal is in the reclamation, I mean, that really hasn't changed. And that's, that's what we're trying to show here, is that we followed that plan. We don't, you know, we don't have the need to, you know, change it really in any way. I mean, we could say that stage four, phase two, doesn't really matter anymore because we're not working over there. It's done. We can, we could essentially say we're removing that from our needs for reclamation. But, you know, the active areas of the quarry, you know, we're proceeding exactly as we, we had always envisioned.
I feel like you're deflecting, you're not answering my questions.
I am not aware of what the speci-, I mean, again, if-
I just said, there are specific parts of the previous plan that you're relying upon that you're saying through the agreement, through the court action, what parts of that plan that you have represented as the reclamation plan, correct? You have heard that numerous times. What parts, what, what you've shown us, what parts of the original plan have been changed? That's my question. And, you know, you're wanting to be, you're trying to be general, and I'm asking you to be specific.
I don't, I don't know what the specific question is that you're looking for me to say has changed. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just asking you to identify what has changed, what, what changed to the reclamation plan that you're presenting. This is shown as the 2025 reclamation plan, right? So that means that this is likely different than another plan prior to 2025. And if it is, I'm just asking for you to point out where the changes are reflected here. That's it.
If I could maybe perhaps interrupt. If you look at page two of the fact sheet, for example, or A7, like the 1986 plan recites specific uses that that could occur after reclamation. Whereas now you, you know, it's a more generalized statement that would replace what originally went. And that statement says, you know, that the goal of the 1986 reclamation plan is to ensure the property is left in a safe condition and suitable for future redevelopment. Is there significant life left in the quarry's operation? Future use is going to be speculated upon at this time. But, and then it goes on.
That's fair. I mean, I look at that as not even part of reclamation. That's redevelopment. Reclamation is, is our process of-
That's one of the, Wayne, that's one of the criteria, though, in the ordinance, that the reclamation plan is supposed to contain. And that was, that was your response. And I'm just suggesting that that was a change from 86 to the present.
Sure. We, the, you know, and I think what we've discussed prior is that, you know, predicting what should occur here 40 years from now is difficult and, you know, probably a conversation that should be left till we get a little closer because what's in demand in 40 years is not, we don't even know what it is. So, you know, that's fair. We're suggesting that, you know, reclamation for us today is a matter of creating safety and stability for the site for whatever those needs may be down the road. I mean, that's a fair point. Again, I'm sorry if that was missed by us. We're, you know, we're looking at this more in terms of how we're, how we're operating and leaving the site for whatever that means. You know, I mean, if, if we're talking about changes that would have occurred between prior plans and today, I mean, essentially what you're seeing every time we redo this is an updated aerial picture in the background where, you know, the quarrying will spread out back here. And as we move here, slopes will get stable. Grasses will be installed. You'll, you'll see less brown, you'll see more green on, on the perimeter. You know, the basins will enlarge to, over time, to show you what we, you know, as we develop this. But, you know, and we stay-
The limits that we show here in terms of public areas.
And we maintain and move piles to facilitate that future reclamation. That's really all reclamation is to us. It's how we're going to leave this in a safe manner.
I have, I have another question, actually. When, when a section of the quarry gets reclaimed, how is the parcel then redeveloped? Would the quarry owner, whoever owns the underlying quarry, would they market that parcel? Would you?
There's various ways. I mean, as you can see, we've already taken areas that were part of the quarry. You know, you know, the county came to us and, and, you know, suggested this as an opportunity for this redevelopment. An agreement was made, you know, it was stabilized and redeveloped. You know, if areas in the front, you know, finish up and we have sizable space that, you know, and a need comes along, you know, we could come to the board and propose a use. You know, there's a good chance that the fact that the quarry is so large, you're not going to want to be parceling out small things here and there. The idea would be to, you know, try to get the quarry stabilized and, you know, you know, a much larger plan put together for, for what should occur here rather than parcel out small pieces. Could it happen? You know, could something come along that makes a lot of sense? Sure. But I don't, I don't believe that's what, what our plan is today. And again, we see that as more of redevelopment, which, you know, we're not, we don't feel like we're at the right point to talk about it yet, not knowing what the needs will be. If we had, if we had proposed warehousing, you know, we would already have missed the boat, you know, on that. But, you know, and so obviously, you know, whatever we pitch today, it could be a totally dead thing, you know, 30 years from now.
Mr. Pappas, does that partially answer your question? So, so Mr. Peck, is it, is it safe to ask whether or not Stavola has the capacity to show us which section of that 86 master plan has been amended to show us what he's showing us today?
Well, I think what, what they've done is, is basically said the 86 plan is what they're relying on. And it's the job of, of this board to make a, it's been referred to the board by, by the ordinance. So the board has to report back to the governing body to say, you know, either we endorse what they're doing, or, or we don't, or we do, but make these recommendations that it, you know, be amended in some way. So what they're saying is they have the 1986 plan, and they're showing how they've progressed in accordance with that. And they've made, from, from what I've read, they've made some, some changes. You know, instead of specifying, hey, we're going to have a ski hill possibly in here, they're saying, hey, well, we just want to stabilize it, make it appropriate for redevelopment, you know, so when the time comes, we can then appropriately figure it out. So, I mean, if the, if the board wants to see more specificity of, in some regard, I mean, now's the time, certainly to ask, ask them. But I don't think, what I'm hearing is, you know, they don't have a point by point of saying, you know, on page, you know, pages 13 through 14, you know, we deleted this, or we're, we're changing that. I don't, I don't think we're going to see that. I don't think.
I guess I want to clarify, I am not suggesting by my questions that I think that you're doing anything wrong. I'm just trying to ask a question for clarity. And Mr. Montag, I'm sorry, for years now, I feel that you have been very dismissive of this question. For some reason, you have not wanted your client to answer the question. And that concerns me. And that continues up until tonight, after the meeting a few months ago, felt, okay, we're past this and we're going to get answers. And I am just as frustrated tonight as I was in September of 22. So that's all. Thank you.
I would only say the purpose of being here tonight was to make sure everybody is very comfortable where we are with the reclamation plan. And, and that is the most important thing. You know, the document that was created in 1986 is, you know, 40 years has passed. They have generally followed that plan. But for year to year, we are in front of, of the town. You know, requests are made, you have an ordinance, we have to make sure we're complying, and we're going to do that. And if tonight there was a question to ask for more detail, or you had a concern about the direction of the reclamation plan, we're happy to address it. We're not, we're not stuck. We're flexible, and we can have that discussion. And I think that's the most important thing, is that we're here to have a dialogue and work with you. We're not telling you you're stuck with, with anything. But we're obviously just providing the update. We wanted to show you the consistency that we see with the plan that was started back in 1986. And we believe this is all consistent. But obviously, we're providing some more detail for you.
Can I ask a question, if you don't mind? What specifically has changed from 2022 to now from the reclamation plan?
In the last three years, there, there's no material change in our mind as to how we're proceeding. It's just, as I said, it, lines will, lines will move incrementally, you know, in as slopes get stabilized, as we push out in other areas, as we move material to create the stable slope. So, you know, reclamation isn't any, you know, it's not a redevelopment. You know, it's, it's all we're going to see here is rising, rising and lowering, you know, altering of slopes so that we, and, you know, as we intend to keep them fully in line with everything in your ordinance, you know, except where, and I think even when we talk about slopes, it's said as practical and, and safe. And, you know, again, that's, that's what we're trying to do with, you know, under our required permitting and state.
I know you said changes materially. What about, what would you consider not material?
I mean, I don't think any plan got so specific as to say. And, and it wouldn't be smart to get, to over, get overly detailed with the plan to say, well, we're going to move this here to there because things change over time. You know, that's why broad strokes are used. Because we can't predict how fast we're going to get to areas. Because if we don't sell a certain amount of material, we're not going to be there. And if we have to do certain reclamation and we haven't sold enough yet, we're going to, we're going to pivot a little bit. But, you know, it's really, we see it as the overall goal that we're working towards. You know, is those safe slopes and maintaining materials on site so that we can meet the requirements of finishing this in the time periods that are required?
So what does that mean? I know you talked about stage, was that three? The back, I know you had asked questions about moving backwards, right? I have a business that's very close to a quarry that's highly impacted after it moved more towards where I have a business. I noticed there are homes there. What is the plan, or how, how soon will that expand closer towards those areas where people live?
It's always expanding in that area. And again, with a, with a 30-year timeframe, you know, in, in our minds, you know, that, that's cessation of quarrying activities. And then within two years of that, we have to have this, the site reclaimed. So as you would see us pushing back into those areas, which will take place over the next, you know, from today till 25 years from now, you know, we'll be continuing to move in that direction. And as we do that, other areas of the site will be brought back, filled in, you know, to, to those stable locations. As you see, you know, here, it's a flatter area. We're, we're stabilizing the southern areas. You know, we'll come out in some and we'll, and we're working back in in others.
So as you, as you stated, that 30 years is a long time, right? And you're saying 30 years, right, that this is going to continue moving back over the next 30 years. I don't like to work in 30-year timeframes. I'd like to know more specifically about how, how long each stage will go inside of stage three.
Everything here is a bench. So as you work out, you take that bench back a certain distance, and then you bring the next bench back. And it's hard to tell you timeframes because, again, it's dependent on sales. If we hit a recession, lines aren't moving. You know, they're going to stay here. If, if the things pick up and there's a ton of development in the area, things may speed up. And that's, that's what's going to, like, we have a certain amount of reserves. That's the fixed number. The rate that it changes is wholly economically dependent.
Say the economy stays the way it is, how long will each bench take?
Again, I don't, I don't know that we can answer that question.
How long did the last bench take?
So as Wayne was explaining, the site has to be brought down to a certain level. Those benches are circum, they circumvent the entire quarry. So we're working from the top down. It's not like we can just move east to west and close off areas as we're going across. It has to be done in almost like a bench down each time and goes down to a lower level. So we can't close out those upper benches until we've completely gone to the western portion, in this case, as Wayne explained, to the extent of the quarry as it is.
So each bench take, could take years or likely takes years?
As we move around in a circumference, yeah, in a circular pattern.
And there are no other material changes that you would say from the last reclamation presentation to now?
Well, I think Wayne mentioned earlier about the relocation of our primary crusher. And for those of you that went on the tour, you saw the relocation of that primary crusher, which is now placed on a final elevation for where that reclamation will take place. What that allows us to do once that crusher's been moved is to take that mountain of material that was in the center for where that primary was previously located and take that down to the final elevation.
Hey, Tom, I'm going to retroactively swear you had the testimony. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you have given and possibly will give in the course of this presentation has been and will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
And could you just state and spell your name?
Sure. It's Thomas Branch, P R A N C H.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add on to, Ms. Secora talked about depth, referring to page seven of those minutes from September 22. And I referenced concerns expressed earlier by Ms. Doyle, who was our planner at the time, and it was specifically about depth. So could you talk a little bit about the depth? I know that she had expressed to me a question about the depth and the lowest point, where that is in relation to the plan?
Well, I think, and again, we believe we're compliant. I don't have an act, an exact elevation to give you tonight. We can certainly help, you know, check the plan and let you know what the lowest current elevation is. You know, and there, there's probably a distinction between quarrying and, you know, how we're leaving the site. So obviously, if we take the quarry down to a certain level, the basins have to get taken down lower to provide the storage volume, you know, to mitigate runoff. So, you know, we may have to look at, you know, lowering these, and we may do that in accordance with when we get the response from Somerset County. And they say, make, you know, if we can do the following things with these basins, it'll provide better flood mitigation. You know, once we have that, again, we're happy to present that to the township and, you know, show you what, you know, how that may change what we do. But, you know, we don't view the, you know, the basins as part of, you know, the quarrying activity per se. It's our, it's our mechanism for maintaining our stormwater. But we can get you an elevation on the quarry limit.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And so is the, the depth, lowest point, or what could change, is that referenced in the reclamation plan that you reference and rely upon? And if so, where on that plan?
We don't, we don't think we have an exact number in that. But also, again, we're, I mean, these plans are presented, we're happy to work with your engineer. You know, our goal, like, obviously, you know, from wherever we have to drain it to, we also have to make sure that we, whatever our reclamation heights are, that we're being pitched to get the water we say it's going to go.
Again, I'm just trying to understand. That's my question is, what, what's the lowest depth? Has that changed? Will that change? I mean, I guess you could answer the question at some point, has it changed? That's, I, no, no, my question was, what's the current lowest point? Has that changed? And, you know, approximately, what period of time has that changed? I think that's what Ms. Doyle was getting at a couple of years ago. And I don't think anyone answered the question then.
We can try to-
And I, and I think I'm trying to just answer, ask some simple questions. And again, my frustration is, you, you don't seem to choose to or are able to answer the questions. And I don't understand that. Must be a strategy. And I don't understand a strategy because I'm just trying to get clarity. That's all I'm trying to get is clarity. I don't have an agenda. Trying to understand.
So we'll look at the plan. We're going to get you that number. Before today, we presented you and Mr. Peck and others with the list of what we thought were the, the key questions and what we were going to address tonight. We actually outlined that. We provided it to everyone, provided it to your engineer. We didn't get any other requests, but we're fine. We'll, we'll have that number. It's just not, it doesn't happen to be on the plan. But we'll get that. We'll get that very quickly for you.
Mr. Ingram, I believe, personally, I believe that from what we saw September 2022 to now, I think the representation of the work that's being done, the work that's projected, the representation is far better than what it was back then. I really understand better today what processes are taking place for the reclamation. So thank you very much for that. I'm hearing both sides. And I think one of my questions now that's kind of born from this is that, and I think to some extent, our former planner, Ms. Doyle, had a question, how can we ensure that progress is being made on the reclamation plan? And I believe the response at the time was that, that the overlay would help. So I do see this overlay. I understand, I appreciate from what I read in the, the fact sheet, that if I, if I understand this correctly, this is taking place like, like a clockwork, right? So you're starting in one place and you're kind of working clockwise through the quarry. And you're revegetating, you're, you're reestablishing the buffers until you get to the other side, right? So if you could give just a high level representation of how this is taking place visually for the board members.
I think one of the things we note is how we know it's how we know it's how we One of the things we note is how we took, you know, we took material from the northern end that we were stockpiling. We've moved that to the south end because as we, you know, hit these limits and work back, we're going to use that for, as part of a reclamation. As Tom mentioned, you know, we've, we've worked on the relocation of the crusher. So this area will, can be brought down to its final depth. You know, and again, maybe in future revisions, what we can start to show you is, you know, you can see a wood line here. You can see a grade. You know, we can start to try to take, you know, overlays of one iteration to another and how things are moving in. But, you know, once we hit these limits on the southern end of where we've taken all the material out, you'll start to see material brought back to create those final slopes. So, you know, if that's a specific thing that you'd like to see, we can make, make more of an effort to highlight it. You know, between the cycles of returning as to, hey, we managed to pull this area back 200 feet or whatever the base.
And I think that's part of the question. So as these, these milestones are achieved, right? Is there any ability, one, we do, you know, achieve some of these, these different tasks. Is there a, a section in the reclamation plan that can be referenced each time that progress is made? So when we, we actually have something to go back to, to, as a point of reference, to say that, hey, this was in the reclamation plan and we've achieved that part of the reclamation plan? Are we allowed that, that level of specificity? Should we require that?
I mean, I think area to area, we, you know, we can, you know, discuss how, you know, you know, distance-wise, you know, well, in stage one, we've, you know, the reclaimed area has pushed north. Just speaking in generalities, we can start to talk about that type of mechanism you would find helpful.
And I understand how complicated this can be because there could be environmental factors, economic factors that take place understood. So things could change. But, but again, general progress that's made. Is there, is there a specific point in the 1986 reclamation plan that can be referenced to check off a box, so to speak, sometime in the future?
Mr. Chairman?
I think the problem is that the areas were, you know, they're large swaths, right? So it's not like we're going to come in here in three years and say, stage one, checked off, done. Because even though they broke it up into these areas of work, the intention wasn't necessarily to, you know, finish stage one before we go to stage three. As you can see from the fact that stage four isn't even going to get touched. I mean, we could basically cross off the reclamation plan. You know, we're working in these areas concurrently. We're just performing different operations in them at this time. You know, once we relocate the crusher, then the plan will change a little bit about what will occur in stage one. There'll be more reclamation, you know, final quarrying and then reclamation as we finish in the rear. I mean, that's probably the specificity that we would, you know, look to provide other than, you know, incremental changes that we can, we can point to.
I'd like to hear from our professionals, if possible, to weigh in on the situation.
And this is timely. I was actually going to try and jump in there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my suggestions is that the reclamation plan itself, the actual narrative document, be updated. I don't think it's been updated since 1986. Is that correct?
No.
So.
Provided the, you know, the summaries and things.
Summaries and things, I think, yeah, they're great. But I think, you know, and this is probably just on my mind, the township had a, had a 1990 comprehensive master plan. That was the last time that the township of Bridgewater had a comprehensive master plan. And over time, there were amendments, and the township just adopted a new master plan 35 years later that includes everything together. And I think what would be really helpful in understanding because going back and reading the 86 reclamation plan helped me to understand what was included in there, what it talked about, the point in time references. It was the first time that a reclamation plan had been done because, mostly because of the, the ownership and also the, the state requirements at the time. And I think what's really, what would be really helpful is if that was updated to date to include everything that's changed over time. Talk about all the things that have happened with the county facility and the DPW. Talk about the stormwater, potential changes to the stormwater basins. I think that's, that's what's helpful. The map and the overlay is incredibly helpful. But I think having a narrative that outlines all the things that have occurred, just like they did in 1986, would be really, really helpful.
Yeah, and I don't think that involves, I understand, I think that we've heard two different kinds of requests. We can do that. But I don't think it'll involve us having to amend the 1986 plan. What we can do is if you wanted to turn some of this into a more detailed narrative, we could, we could do that by way of update, obviously, you know, and explain it. I do believe we created a document that was, that we've given to the board that does explain that. It doesn't go into incredible detail.
Is that the two-page talk?
That's it. And it's a general overview of it. But we could do, if it would help, we could do a more, more detailed update on sort of explaining where things are right now. I think that's one. And I think the other question that came up was maybe trying to show when there are material changes to reclamation, to be able to point to that so you can more readily follow it. And I think that's something we could do. You know, the, when, when we were, you know, getting up to, you know, what's happened, you know, in terms of reclamation between 19, between 2022 and 2025? Well, not much. They've been mining during that, most of that time. There hasn't been a lot that's changed on the mining plan. Again, nothing material at all. But, but obviously, it's a fair question to say, hey, you know, when you are making changes, can we see that? And can we point that out with a little, little more clarity? So I, so I think both we can work with you on.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be wonderful. And I think it would give the opportunity to also answer some of the questions that the board had asked so that it is somewhere that it can be pointed back to. I think to Mr. Pappas' question, I think having topography, legible topography on one of these maps might be helpful too. Just so there's an understanding of where low points, high points are referenced. The only other question I had was the reference to the stage four, phase two area in the 86 reclamation plan and in the updated summary, really just, it only references that. So I believe the 86 reclamation plan talked about potentially regrading that area. And it looks largely wooded right now. Can you just provide an update if that's still the plan from the, the 86 reclamation plan?
So with the way that, you know, there was zonings and requirements to keep the high ridge for the, the idea of going into that area is just squashed. So.
I think, and that would be a great update.
More or less to say, removed from the idea. I mean, there's nothing, you know, we don't want to take down trees to regrade. This is going to, this is not part of reclamation anymore. It's going to stay as it is. It's part of the quarry.
Okay. And that's one of the big updates that I think would, when it makes its way into whatever we're going to call it, whatever that document is, that's a, that's a better update than what was provided here. It's, or it's more accurate at least. Thank you.
Mr. Burr, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a few, Mr. Chairman. And I think the first kind of goes back to the discussion of the 1986 reclamation plan versus the 2025 plan. And when we hear the word "plan," I'm thinking, I'm thinking this. I'm thinking what Wayne has up on the board. But the 86 plan is a written document. It's a narrative. And I think when someone is trying to compare a written narrative to an engineered plan, sometimes the details don't line up or they're difficult to, you know, make sense of when you're comparing them. So I agree with, with some of the board sentiments. I agree with Catherine here. I think it would be very valuable to have an updated narrative reclamation plan, whether it's in a, you know, in an amendment, a separate document, or something that's affixed to this somehow. Because right now, we really don't have a good baseline of what was approved in 86. We have this reclamation, it's called Reclamation Program, but the copy I have is not dated. So having that baseline document, and this is really a compelling document, speaking about the history of this quarry back to, gosh, I'm embarrassed, 17 or 1800s. And then it goes up to 40 years ago, and then we have nothing. And I think there's probably been a lot of important and, and good storytelling that's taken place on that property in the last 40 years. Let's get it current and then build upon it in the future. You know, we heard Wayne, I think he mentioned 30 to 35 years of life left. The exec, the executive summary says 20 to 25 years. I get it. There, you know, that's hard to pinpoint. But to have that information be included in an updated document so that we're not comparing a narrative and, and what I consider an outdated narrative to a plan or subsequent plans that get submitted every year with the annual license, that would be helpful. There's some things in the original reclamation program or narrative that I think are outdated. Something as simple as the owner. The owner is no longer Stavola at a Red Bank. I think something like that should be, should be updated. There may be changes in that original plan. It speaks to different zoning requirements. Some of those may have been updated. There's a preamble about the 45% slopes and the 50, 50-foot benches. I don't know that that, it sounds like that's not, not still what's being, not complied with, but what's, I think we have, ultimately, we have slopes that are steeper based on what Wayne said with their discussions with the Department of Labor. And then the original narrative talks at that time in 1986 to the useful life. We know those days are changed. So I think just having an updated document, knowing exactly what the original document was, and then have it be updated, amended, appended, however it, however it needs to get executed so that we know what we're dealing with in 2024, moving into the future, I think is going to be valuable as, as this, this quarry for the next 20 or 30 years continues to operate. So that's my, that's my two cents. I have a couple of quick questions for Wayne while we're at it, though, unless anybody has any questions for me. Wayne, you talked about the fact that your plan was updated to show the chain link fence. And that chain link fence, I, the ordinance requires a chain link fence anytime the quarrying operations have approached closer to 100, than 150 feet to, I think, the adjacent residential zones. So it, is that why the chain length, like, is the chain link fence shown everywhere around the perimeter? I haven't looked in close enough detail. Or is it only shown where those quarrying operations have encroached closer than 150 feet?
Honestly, closer, but along property lines where our intention is to go up to the buffer. So the fence line is essentially, you know, following here along the residential zone to the west and along the north. You know, this northern edge is where we're basically right up to the 150-foot mining limit. And the idea was to put it anywhere we're adjacent to those residential zones. So, you know, we are not within anywhere close to that distance along our southern boundaries. And again, that's, that's all commercial zoning. You know, we own this parcel here, you know, and we're not going to be getting within, let's do what our scale is here, you know, 500, 400 feet of the, you know, of that line. So, you know, we believe we're compliant in that respect. Anywhere we have a high wall that it butts those, you know, those zones that's being quarried, we do have the fence.
And that fencing is in good repair right now, correct?
Yes.
Good condition?
You know.
I understand.
Trees fall, you know, breaks happen, but, you know, it is, it is an operable fence.
And I, I guess my question is to that point, because that's a good one. Does somebody from Stavola currently survey the perimeter of the property to make sure it's in good shape?
We review our, our security and, you know, take measures to fix any damage.
Okay. You had mentioned the work that AECOM, in conjunction with the quarry owners and Somerset County, are working on kind of a regional stormwater review, a flood mitigation type, type proposal. And they're currently engaged, yes?
Yes.
And they've completed the initial phase of the project. And now it sounds like they're in the next phase, which is doing a little bit more of the, the hard engineering, it sounds like, right?
They reviewed the hydrology, you know, came to the conclusion that they believe that this could be a beneficial site. That was the idea in that final. They concurred with that and having them move to the next step, which is more concrete design.
And do you, do you know how long this next step is envisioned to take? No? No? I just didn't know if we were looking at 12 months, two years, six months? If you had any feedback from 12 to 18?
First phase, as Wayne mentioned, was to understand the hydrology. Joe Scoopian, if you know who he is, he's the stormwater expert for Somerset County. He was engaged to analyze the benefit of potentially storing water within the quarry. His initial report came back showing that, yes, there was a benefit diverting some of the water, specifically the eastern branch of the Middle Brook into the quarry. So with that, it now comes back to us as the quarry owners to look at how structurally we could actually make that work in conjunction with our operation. So as you asked, I'd say 12 to 18 months.
I have one more question, and now I, give me a second. I'll come back to my mind. Well, in the absence of, of thinking of my other question, I'll ask this, Wayne. So stage three, where, where the current quarrying operations are taking place, is, is that the focal point? Is that going to be the focal point for the next 20 to 30 years? I'm sure you mentioned this already, but I just want to clarify. So stage one, the quarrying, the active quarrying is complete? Stage two, it's complete?
Well, again, so the, the crusher's been relocated.
Yep.
Eventually, it's going to be relocated to the rear, which will allow us to get the last bits out of stage one.
Oh, so there is still a little bit of potential in, in stage one? Okay.
We have, we want to bring that, ultimately bring that down to the level that becomes the reclaimed level. So there are areas that are still being taken out. At that point, you know, once that, that's back there, the rear area of stage three is where most of the operations will be.
And do you have any sense of the timing of when that equipment gets taken out of area one? And when area one gets, I mean, are we talking in the near term or are we talking years out?
15 years.
For the next 15 years, the focal point is going to be area three?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. And last question. You had mentioned you can update your plan to show the topo, show the elevations in a little more clarity as well as give us the depth of bottom of the quarry.
To your point, they're, they're on here, but at this, at this scale, it's tough. I think the beauty of it is you can see the totality. But if, if you think something like, you know, basically taking this in quadrants and blowing it up so you have like four sections in a greater detail that you can read them a bit better, I mean, we can certainly do that.
And that, and that would answer the question that was raised earlier by Mr. Pappas and Ms. Doyle previously about the depth of the, of the mine, basically.
Yeah, I mean, in my, in my poor, you know, eyesight, I can see, you know, contour grades in the 80s. You know, seems to be the lower end of these sections. Elevation 80 seems to be roughly what I'm seeing from the contours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. And I'll come back to you if you do recall the question that you had. Any other members of our planning board have any questions? Any members of the public that wish to speak to this current witness, please feel free to come forward. And I'll close the public portion for this witness. Are there any other speakers that you'll have for this presentation?
We just want to make sure we thank you all for, we, I see this as a good dialogue, as a productive dialogue. I think, and it started with Mr. Peck and I having a lot of conversations and some letters about this. But I think the takeaway was, you know, we, we don't want to argue about the 1986 one. We think that's a standalone document. I don't think we need to amend it or do anything like that. That's not going to be our focus. But my takeaway is I think you do want a narrative that marries to what the current plan looks like, what you're looking at. Put some more words to that so that you can say, ah, let me just read it in plain English. And then also have us think about how do we show changes over time to you so it's a little bit easier to follow. We'll make that our homework assignment.
When are you guys before the Township Council, December?
We've asked for November 6. I have the application, as I mentioned, Mr. Burr, that I'd like to come with him.
So I'm just saying, you know, procedurally, the council is supposed to have some sort of referral report from this board about the reclamation. So I'm just thinking how you get, you know, the updated narrative. So I'm just thinking how you get, you know, the updated narrative and, you know, so we have enough time and can, can handle that. What do you propose?
Well, we'll move quickly from our end to get that to you, and maybe you and I can work out procedurally how we do that. Obviously, we want to do this well before year end, so.
Yeah, no, it would appear.
Yeah.
I don't know what the upcoming schedule looks like.
We have a meeting scheduled for October 21st where we are hearing one application. Thereafter, November's a little bit of a weird month because we have Election Day, which means we don't have a meeting the first Tuesday of the month, and then the second Tuesday of the month is the League of Municipalities on the 18th, so it's unclear if we will have a meeting that evening, leaving December 2nd. Give me one second to double check that. December 2nd being our next, pretty much, you know, known meeting.
And for similar reasons, the one and only meeting of the Township Council during November is November 6th with, you know, the League and Thanksgiving and, you know, all kinds of other things.
Well, you mentioned October 21. Is that, is that looks like what, you know, for us to get this done by year end, I think that's what we're looking at. You know, we'll have to work quickly and get you some more information, but I think we'll, we'll just plan on that if that works for you.
We, correct, how, we do have a few items of business that evening, correct?
One here.
One, one hearing, okay.
So we'll just carry this until, until the 21st?
That works for you. That works for us.
It does. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Monte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page seven. Okay, moving along with this evening, we do have a quick update on the open space and recreation plan, and with the master plan. Then Ms. Sarmid, would you like to give us that update?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
So while we have a little bit of momentum with the master plan, there, I did mention at last week's hearing that there is one other master plan element that has not yet been adopted. That's the open space and recreation element to the master plan. I did reach out to CME, who is the primary author of the document. They are, we're going to work together to, you know, fix up any last-minute things. We did have a workshop last year, so if any changes needed to be incorporated from the open space workshop, as well as any recommendations related to open space and recreation that were heard by the planning board last week, that could be incorporated. So some final changes, potentially looking towards early December to, to also get that adopted. So I will continue to provide the board with updates related to that draft and when it could be finalized for adoption.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sarmid. Any other questions or comments from our board? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
That's Ms. Sekora, second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Chartowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you.